Now Chris Corey on the video.
Well, we won't be, unfortunately, we can't add him without a quorum.
We have.
We have a quorum.
A big quorum.
We have a quorum now, yes, okay, sir. Now we can.
I don't know about Corey though.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm, I'm a yes.
I have to let Chris Corey in on the TV screen somewhere.
So we've got, we've got a meeting called order, we have a quorum, we would need, we'll need a motion second and a vote to add, to add Corey.
He's doing an acknowledgement.
Whatever, whatever Derek thinks is better.
I would prefer to have him added for purposes.
So you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to accept that Councilman Corey is with us virtually.
Second.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Well, you can just vote for it, we'll be.
I just made a motion.
And then all in favor say aye. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Fred said aye.
Aye.
Aye Fred.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember, test, test. Is the mic live?
Yeah.
Councilmember Purdon, Councilmember Carr, Mayor Steinmeier, Councilmember Fullick,
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes, Councilmember Bogaz, and she has informed us of her absence. Councilmember Corey.
Here.
I heard you're here.
Here.
So we'll, we'll check on his remote participation and we do have a quorum.
Yes, I am here.
Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, at this time, we're going to continue our series of capital improvement plan updates.
You can hear us.
Testing. This one.
I'm here.
You guys hear this now? Yes.
Hello?
Yep.
We're not hearing this one either.
We're not hearing anything out here, you guys.
I can hear you.
That's good, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's, quite frankly, that's probably enough. As long as everyone in the room can hear.
Can everyone in the room hear us?
No.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
All right, now it's, it's like, thank you.
Did it go?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, at this time, we're going to continue our series of capital improvement plan presentations. Laura Taylor, Communications and Facilities Director, will be beginning with discussing the, the improvements to our facilities, as well as technology capital improvements, and then she will be providing an update on the city of Benita Springs 25th Anniversary Campaign.
Okay, to, to cover that, we will start with the 25th Anniversary Campaign, and then we'll just start here. So staff did roll out a soft launch for our 25th Anniversary to coincide with our enhanced holiday stroll this year, which all of you got a chance to take a look at that attended the Holiday in the Park event yesterday. We felt like it was a good time to really kind of announce the 25th Anniversary celebrations that will take place throughout 2024, and how they're going to coincide with some of the city events that will be enhanced. I just want to thank Carissa, Logan, Debbie, Marcelo, Alex, Antonio, all of my team, because they've been working very hard to pull off both the rollout of the 25th Anniversary, the event last night, the enhanced holiday stroll, and I just, I couldn't do it without them, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank them for all of their hard work. Last night was a great example of how the businesses can also engage with us for our 25th Anniversary. As you could see, a lot of the businesses, businesses had enhanced holiday lighting. They really matched the city's holiday lighting, so the downtown corridor, sorry, I'm just like, I don't know if you guys can hear me very well, but it seems like it's echoing for me, can you guys hear that?
You're good.
Okay, I think must be the door open. But, but basically, what you can see is the entire downtown corridor really sparkled last night, and I think that is momentum that we should keep all year long for the 25th Anniversary celebrations. And that starts with engaging with them and asking them to participate in various contests, like holiday lighting contests. We've also designed some logos to celebrate the 25th Anniversary. This will be the first logo that the city will use, this will be on our website, any official documentation. This will be with our enhanced events, you can see the confetti there. And this will be the logo that we're going to encourage our local businesses to use. They can download and add to their promotional flyers as well this year. We also just unveiled a webpage where folks can continue to look back and see how we're going to be celebrating all year long, because we will be adding new information throughout the year. The ways that the people can connect with us, the community, they can connect through downloading the mobile app, visiting the webpage, and, and subscribing to our news stories. And then, as I mentioned previously, we'll have enhanced, enhanced events all year long. We'll have photo contests that will start in April 2024 and go to November 2024. We've already had one submission, so we're pretty excited about that. We will be displaying the winners at a council meeting in December, close to the incorporation date. We will be working with our city council, our partners, our committees, and our volunteers to film short public service announcements that will be showcased on our social media platforms, our website, and Channel 98. We'll also encompass the winning pictures from the photo contest into that. The goal will be that we film all year long, all of the enhancements, all the celebrations, our council members and our partners, and really build a video that will be published on the incorporation date, which December 31st. So on that day, we'll really publish the, the full video of everything that happened in the entire year celebrating the 25th Anniversary. We will also be highlighting history from Benita Springs, and I'd just like to ask Council to start to think about what you'd like to include in your videos. So we're going to be reaching out to you in early spring to start filming that. And then just quickly, this anniversary video was one of the first ones we, we've done to kind of just launch the idea of the 25th Anniversary, and it was to coincide with our enhanced holiday stroll and our holiday in the park. Whoops, and there's no sound, so let's go back. One second. No, I stopped it, there was no sound. If technology does not, you know, cause some issues, then it wouldn't even be a meeting, would it? We did test this beforehand, believe it or not.
Oh, I do believe.
Laura, if I can ask you a question, the logos, they're already, they can be downloaded by the businesses?
Yes, and that's on the, the webpage that's been published, so they can, they can download that now. There's a disclaimer that kind of speaks about how and, and when they can use it.
Thank you.
We're building the anticipation for the video.
My bad here, I'm sorry, gentlemen and ladies, we're just trying to maximize it so that we could have a full view, you want to show, show it again?
No, no, it's okay, they've, they've all seen it, just to give you the idea.
You haven't taken it.
It's a beautiful video.
For some reason, obviously, he doesn't want to cooperate.
It's a workshop, you know, we're working together to get these things done. Okay, so moving forward, let's move on. So the next portion of this workshop, oh, now I got to get it back in.
You were holding the remote.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay, so the next portion of our presentation, we're going to be discussing the status of some of the projects that we've been working on. As you recall, Weston Sampson presented the assessment report to you in late July. Since then, you authorized staff to begin working on Priority One repairs. Staff has started that process. We have worked with the maintenance building, the former library, the old rec, the new rec, and the pool building, and we're going to continue working on those buildings until we get the Priority One repairs finished. We have the City Hall generator that's going to be delivered in mid-December, and that should be complete by about March 2024, with the existing generator that's on location here to be moved to the Parks and Recreation Center, and it will be refurbished and completed by March 2024. The City Hall Parking Lot Improvement Project will start early January 2024, and that will go through March 2024. And Arlene will touch on this a little bit later in the council meeting, but we will be looking to reschedule some, or schedule some of our public meetings at other locations to accommodate the parking, since the parking lot will be completely under construction. The City Hall Pocket Park is starting mid-January 2024 and will be complete in March 2024. So as you can see, we're making quite a bit of progress, Marcelo's been working very hard on getting some of those projects going. And then for the Information Technology Update, everything is going wonderful, as you can tell.
No.
Is the, we're doing, currently doing assessment of city servers, that's underway. What we found beneficial during the hurricane is that we host our website offsite, as well as our email system is hosted in the cloud instead of onsite. That was extremely beneficial to us, as local weather did not impact those prod, or, or the infrastructure that we had here during that time. And we've been hosting some cybersecurity training sessions with staff, which has been helpful for any phishing attacks, and just really making sure they're educated and they can identify those things prior to anyone trying to attempt to get them to engage with that. We're going to shift gears a little bit now and go to the city facilities portion of this presentation. As you see here, this is an overview map of all the city facilities. I'm going to touch briefly on each structure and a few of the items and the condition of that structure, and then we'll get to the prioritization portion of this workshop, which is what we're, we're looking for some feedback from Council on. So for the former library building, that was built in 1981, there had, there were some enhancements that were done through 1990. It's below flood elevation, the roof system needs to be replaced, the entire HVAC system needs to be replaced. The building does not currently have fire sprinklers, and depending on the future use, which we know Council has indicated, what they'd like to see there, and there's been discussions with our local sheriff's office, and we're working towards, working with them for that. A fire sprinkler system will need to be installed, and there will also, you know, likely be obviously a change in use. The Recreation Center Building was built in 1995. That will need to replace the, the entire HVAC system there as well, remove existing ventilation systems and ductwork, and provide entirely new systems, including energy recovery ventilator for the locker room, exhaust, and separate dedicated preconditioning outside. The Recreation Center Building, the old rec was built in 1979. The above ceiling space is vented to the outside with little to no vapor barrier separating the warm humid air from the conditioned space. This has resulted in humidity concerns. All air conditioning systems in the building will need to be replaced soon, with new refrigerant lines and new refrigerant piping insulation to be included. The Lyles Hotel was built in 1944. First, we did get the air conditioning systems replaced with the most recent storm, but there is some outside air ventilation system that needs to be looked at. And the Administration Building at the Wonder Gardens was built in 1949. We need to plan on replacing shingle roofing on the original building, replace low slope roofing of, of the front entry. And there's some ADA accessible things that need to be worked on there as well. The Restaurant was built in 1946. We need to redesign and replace all HVAC equipment, remove and replace the west side of the building and its foundation. The Pool House, which was built in 1990, we need to repair and replace the CMU walls and effective concrete slab between equipment room and office, replace metal roofing, and also look at replacing some of the electrical equipment. The Pole Barn at the Wonder Gardens was built in 1947. We need to reconstruct deteriorated sections of the foundation wall or locations requiring column replacement. The Maintenance Building, which was built in 1991, we need to replace shingle roofing and install some timber to wall anchors and replace vinyl soffit. The Artist Cottages, which were built in 1944, remove and replace wall siding and install vapor barrier, voluntary, voluntary structural hardening evaluations and retrofit placeholder practical improvement with floodproofing and vaporproofing. Okay, and so now that we've touched on the, the conditions of the building, I'd like to shift gears and talk about prioritization. Council has already given us direction on City Hall, the Sheriff's Substation, and the former library. Currently, the buildings that are still pending for prioritization and discussion would be the Pool Building, the Maintenance Shed, the Old Rec Center, the New Rec Center, the Restaurant, the Welcome Center, the Lyles, the Pole Barn, and the Artist Cottages. And in looking at this, we've developed the following categories that seem like logical options for the disposition of these buildings. That would include demo with no build back, demo and replace with a new upgraded structure, demolition and replace with a new amenity such as a parking lot or a splash pad, renovate and upgrade or repair as suggested with long-term plan. We've taken a look at, at these, and we've compared the renovate and upgrade cost to the tear down and rebuild cost. And looking at this, we honed in on the differential percentages of the buildings and, and the ones that need the most repair. These buildings have low-cost differential percentages. Take for example, the pool, the pool structure, which we have located, I don't know if you guys can all see pretty well the, the tables here, but that's at a 1% on the, on the percentage differential. And, and we know that building is, needs quite a bit of repair, and it might make more sense for that building to be torn down and replaced versus rehabbed. There also seems to be a natural breakpoint, if you look at the, at the table there, at about 20 to 22%. Anything under that mark really needs some serious consideration on whether it should be rehabbed or completely tore down and replaced. Obviously, if you have a building like the Welcome Center, you would need to consider the historic nature, and, and you may want to preserve that due to the historic nature. So next, we've taken these categories, I've mentioned in the previous slide, with the cost differential percentages to help guide at a first attempt of prioritization, and we're looking for your feedback. To assist us here, I would just want to kind of reference the fact that, you know, there's a natural cluster of city facilities at the Recreation Center area, that includes the former library, that, that seem to be viable candidates for project, like the first start for these projects, for this long-term range project. And then we would have the Wonder Gardens here. You've had recent workshops with the Wonder Gardens Board, you're under contract negotiations with that board currently. So obviously, that will impact when we do these renovations for that area. And then also, I just want to mention for the Pole Barn, that's a little bit different. We have talked with the director about the Pole Barn, and it is severely deteriorated. So we have been in discussions with him to ask that he stop using the facility, and they do seem open in discussions to the potential of demoing that Pole Barn and not replacing it. Then we have the Lyles area, there, it's kind of listed a little bit further down the list there. And, and Council, you just gave us direction for DPZ to take a, take a look at that and, and bring back their thoughts on that. So, so obviously, we couldn't do anything with that building until we get that, that back from them. And then we still have the Restaurant Building, it's kind of an outlier here. And it, it really, you know, the cost differential table, it is at negative 19% there, but we'll await any further direction on the Restaurant from Council. And if Council is comfortable with the approach that we've taken here for the prioritization, it will be reflected back in the capital improvement budget during the upcoming budget season. And that concludes my portion, if you have any questions or you want to have discussion.
My, my question is that the cost of repairs seem extremely high. I, I don't like to tear things down, because we've had 25 years building up the city, now we're going to tear it down. And we're not going to have a, we're not going to have these facilities for quite a period of time. So I don't know, it seems to me like we're working against ourselves. So we, we're still using these facilities, and, and now we're using the almighty dollar whether to kill them or kill, or cure them. So I don't know, that's my opinion, but that's, that's just my opinion. Fred?
Yeah, I think it's real important, Laura, that in the, any of these buildings you're working on the HVAC and changing out, by golly, you put in what we did here, where you modulate the air, you've got sensors in the ductwork, because a lot of the, a lot of the time a day, nobody's in the building, but yet you're bringing in the air like you've got people in here. City Hall was fortunately fixed so, the right way, so you want to do that. Make sure that you get rid of all the regular non-LED lighting, go with LED on any of the buildings that are high use, because that'll cut to operating costs now. If you, and I, I'll be happy to write it down and give it to you, so, because your consultants will not do that unless you tell them to do it.
We'd be happy to, to discuss that further with you, Fred, when we get to those stages, for sure.
It's the right thing to do, because you're going to save money.
Nigel, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. Laura, you said you had talked to the Wonder Gardens new executive director, and he is amenable to possibly not replacing the Pole Barn?
Just during the meeting that we had for the contract negotiations, he, they did indicate that they would be open to that. There wasn't a final decision made at that stage, but we have made it clear to them not to be using the facility, because there's liability.
Not safe.
Right.
Yeah, I, I can step in, I don't want to, I don't want to get too detailed, because we, we had very productive conversations, and, and Councilman Purdon can, can give you more detail about that later in the meeting. But we're still working out some of the details. The shorthand answer is they're, they want blessing of their master plan. Some of these buildings and items may not have a place in their master plan, so to the mayor's point, maybe those may no longer have any value. What we indicated to them was, safety-wise, if a building is a high priority and there's no plan for us or them to address it immediately, then it had to be closed off from access to the public. And then we also made it clear that if the city goes in and makes these improvements, that there would be charges back to the Wonder Gardens as, as part of our, our recovery, cost recovery strategy.
Any idea what it would cost to demo, I mean, we've all seen the building, it's really not much of anything. What would it cost to demo that building?
Wade, do you have an approximate number for demoing a building like that?
To, just to clarify, you're talking about the Pole Barn, correct?
Pole Barn, just the Pole Barn, yeah, not the Wonder Gardens.
Want to be clear. Sorry, can't hear you.
Twenty thousand, maybe.
What did he say?
Twenty thousand dollars.
He said, approximate, now this is approximate, it's top, off the top of his head, because when they calculated, they calculated for any demo cost would be included if you're going to replace the building. But off the top of his head, twenty thousand dollars or, or around that number would be a good, a good starting point.
I'm delighted they want to work with us, but I'm looking at that and I'm saying, no buts, I shouldn't have said but. The fact that twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to remove a safety hazard, that's kind of a no-brainer, because I'm not going to look at the Pole Barn as being a priority item for us. And half a million dollars, not a priority item.
I think one thing that might help here a little bit is, is, is staff looked, Laura's team looked at with the consultants possibly formulating an idea of A, B, C, D, and A, B, C, and D.
You can see it listed here.
As sort of our starting point. And those being city facilities, we received direction from you all to coordinate with the Lee County Sheriff's Office and our Neighborhood Services on the, the old, old library, so that's, that's Priority One, we know that, it's from the discussions you've all had. The Rec Center is an important facility for us to keep in use, and, as well as the Maintenance Building for our, for our staff and the pool. And I think none of this is asking for a decision of whether you would remove any of these facilities, demo them, or change them. I think we want to look at prioritization, which then leads to the first stage, which is planning. And just as we did City Hall, that would require one-on-one meetings with each of you to discuss your individual priorities. A lot of detail came from those, from former council, I mean, from former Councilman Mike Gibson, as well as Deputy Mayor Forbes. And so we would be looking for your direction on that, and then we would come back with cost differentials and information for you to make those decisions. So I think it would be a little premature to make any prioritization of Wonder Gardens facilities, except for those immediate safety issues, which we addressed, until Councilmember Purdon can come back with more of those discussions that we've had, and, and how we would, who would do those improvements, and how we prioritize those based on their master plan and the city, and the city council's priorities.
And that really leads to, as you see on the map here, that's why we identified, really the first starting point for us to focus on would be the area in green. If Council agrees to that prioritization, that would be giving us the green light to be able to, to start looking and start working towards those buildings as, as priority, understanding that the yellow and the red area has other, other things tied to it, which we, we, we need to wait for, like the DPZ study, study, or the contract negotiations for the other areas.
Great presentation.
I was going to say, again, the comment, I, I know we've got it as a, a B-list item, but that Pole Barn, twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars to remove something that's a liability, health hazard, God knows what else, that thing's going to get torn down one way or another, so I'd like to see that on the A-list.
And, and that's listed as Priority One as well, it's just a matter of, of getting everyone to agree and, and figure out who is doing the funding for that demo.
So I think to clarify, when we went through the original master plan in the presentation, we identified Priority One, not, not by facility, but, but, by immediate need.
You're referring to the Wonder Gardens' master plan?
No, no, I'm sorry, I want to clarify.
The assessments.
Citywide, the facility, the facility assessments' master plan, for citywide, we identified basically like a tier one, which was immediate life safety ADA issues that need to be addressed. Then you authorized a budget line item for that for Laura to address those. So there are going to be small, minor, but she's already started on the pool, there's already things we're working on in the pool, there's already things we're working at the Maintenance Center. So all of these items that were immediate are being looked at. One that we needed a little bit more assistance with, because it's coordinating with the Wonder Gardens, is the Pole Barn. But any of those items, you have funded, and the team is working on addressing those. Beyond that, these are the larger scale master plan of how do we get to the reuse. You know, we've kind of talked a little bit about the pool and the child, the children's facilities that we're going to add to that, the fact that we need a, a family bathroom. Is it time for our population and our size and the land that you have there, now that you have the extension of the campus from the land from the old library, do we look at re-envisioning what the pool looks like for the future and creating that part of the master plan for that? So those are the bigger picture.
And, I would, go ahead. I was going to say, with, with the Wonder Gardens side of it, I, I completely understand what you're saying, I'm tracking, it's, I, I think of the, the Pole Barn and stuff like that, this is like in a holding space, because we have to nail down the details with them. I mean, they have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of life safety issues until they're appropriately operational. So figuring out how we get them over that hurdle, and then how we dovetail that into a working operating agreement that we're both happy with, that includes the appropriate allocation for rent and capital improvement projects. So it's coming, they want, we'll get more into it later, but I mean, long. So it's coming, they want, we'll get more into it later, but I mean, long story short, they're going to need, you know, they're looking for probably ten years. And with that, we have to discuss, you know, a lot of, a lot of other little pieces in between, like, yeah, the is them wanting us to do the master plan? There are ten or fifteen things in that master plan, we can't approve those. I brought up in the meeting the problem of, okay, so if we approve the master plan and on the master plan is an animal hospital that then has to go through our zoning and we have to vote on. I've already approved the master plan, now how do I go back and then vote on the hospital? So I mean, there are some problems, also donor intent issues. You know, if somebody's donor intent goes past a certain amount of time and they're a bad actor, not that they will be, we can't be held over the barrel because, oh, we're going to get this couple million dollars and it it's not supposed to come until two twenty twenty-five, so we can behave badly all twenty twenty-four. You see what I'm saying? So getting all of those pieces together is in the process, and the pole barn and stuff like that are all little pieces of that. So it's definitely going to be part of getting things moving appropriately with the Wonder Gardens.
And the only thing I'm saying, Jesse, it's almost like I'd like to see it pulled out, it really, you've been over there.
Yeah.
That is a safety issue, that's a real safety issue.
Well, the, I hear you, and I tend, in a way, I agree. The problem is, okay, say we say we do it for twenty-five grand, and now we're like, okay, it's twenty-five grand, but it, we have to, we have so many little pieces like that on their property that we have to go through that with.
Well, I didn't go to engineering school, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn once, that thing's coming down.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, it's coming down.
Nothing salvageable about it.
I don't think either, I don't think either side wants to keep it up in its current state. I'm not saying they may or may not want to put something else up, but I think there was an agreement on both sides that it in its current status isn't appropriate, neither of us want it up. Then it got baked back into the cake of who's going to pay for it. Well, if we're going to talk about who's going to pay for that, we also have to talk about blah, 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 blah. So it's it's all in a box together.
Jesse, did, did you get into with them about coming up with more realistic construction times and costs?
I told them that, and I specifically said, you know, Councilman Forbes has brought up at the meeting, you know, his thoughts in regards to the estimates that were given on on the work that is supposed to be done, and he thinks that they're a little bit low. So, you know, that isn't something that's going to go away. So, you know, you're going to need to come back kind of with receipts to make this, make this seem like something that's workable for everybody. But I mean, that point came up specifically to your name and and that you brought it up, so they're aware. And I even talked to them about, you know, I didn't suggest that they shifted, but I suggested that they be, you know, open-minded to, you know, things that are going to have potentially a better ROI, events, things like that, where they can actually get some money in the coffers. And then we don't get into a situation where we're being so tight back and forth about things that need to be done because there's actually money there. And then I brought up the fact that it's not appropriate to be raising money for things that are not yet approved. And I also brought up the fact that if we're going to have a truly good relationship, we can't, we can't communicate through the media when we're mad at each other. We need to communicate as adults to each other. And I I I'm not sure if that's going to actually be written in there, there may be a communication clause kind of put in there insinuating that they'll they'll talk to Laura when they're mad about something. And, you know, we can have that adult conversation in the house, you know, not as opposed to on Wink and NBCT and and Fox. So we can't have, we can't relive what we did at the restaurant, and I said that specifically. And I use that as a reference and said, things like that, if we're going to be in a relationship, things like that are non-starters for me, that's not a relationship. So we can't be catching left hooks on the news because you guys are mad at us. So if you're mad at us, we have to have those discussions and it has to be done appropriately. So that also was brought up.
And so if council is comfortable with the way we've prioritized, you know, the the green area, I think that gives us some good direction on on what we could start to look at as as first steps for some of this. Obviously, you've already indicated the former library is a priority. And and steps have been made to meet with that that organization, and it will take time as we work with them to to figure out what that looks like. However, you know, like even for that building in particular, it's under the twenty percent mark for the percentage differential. And we're seeing that's coming in at about fifteen percent, and that's before we hear any requirements that might that agency might need. So so while that's top priority, we may be able to, if you if you're comfortable with the green area, some of the other buildings that might make more sense that aren't as intensive with other partners that we need to work through, we could start concurrently working on some of those and not be delayed on, as long as the, you know, the green prioritization is something that you are comfortable with us starting to to look at.
Additionally, in coordinating with the Wonder Gardens, we will be reaching out, they would like to have individual meetings with each of you and discuss their master plan and get your thoughts individually on that, you know, prior to any, anything else coming forward to council for any sort of approval of a master plan. We've also begun some conversation with the sheriff's office, and there would be an opportunity for one-on-one meetings with council members with the sheriff's office and with Tony to kind of talk about what needs we have and how we address that in the facility. So it just, it would be a step of a larger concept for for that facility, too.
Would the individual meetings be then followed up by another workshop, so the public can be involved?
Yes, so absolutely, because any decision-making has to come back. And they want to be able, I think everyone would want to be able to make, you know, adjustments or tweaks to the to the indicated, to basically what they hear from council. And then that would be presented back, either in the in a council meeting as part of a presentation or if need be, a workshop.
And that goes back to, it will take some time, since we're going to be having these meetings and talking with these partner agencies, before we can get to any even thirty percent design plans, it'd be nice to have another building that that's allocated in that green area if council feels comfortable with the green area that we could start to look at during that time while we're working the other steps with these agents, the the sheriff's office and the one-on-ones.
Well, I feel very comfortable with the green area. I think it's a great setup of how to proceed.
Is that a green light?
Yes. And and similar to the other projects, for example, you have a master plan for bicycle pedestrian master plan. Each of those projects are pulled out and you have individual workshops, meetings, presentations on those. You've had several public workshops on Goodwin, for example. So there's always more opportunity for, and once the project's pulled out, made a priority, there's there's meetings, there's approvals, there's contracts that have to come back before you. So this is only the very beginning of planning stages.
We have to work out the budgets for this?
Correct.
All this stuff, none of this is, none of this is budgeted, none of this work has been budgeted at all.
You have some placeholders within the facility CIP, but those individual projects are not broken out yet. So very similar to how Matt operates his transportation CIP, he'll pull those projects out, they'll have an individual line item.
I just wanted to add, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, you know, if if you give us the the green light on the green zone.
Can't resist.
I can't. It's these projects, like Laura mentioned, they're going to advance at different rates because of complications. So, you know, the easiest, you know, what is it, the maintenance building, that's regardless of whether we knock that down and and build a newer maintenance building or rehab it, it's a small building, it's not going to be as complicated, it's likely to advance quicker. But if if you give us that guidance, you know, towards the way it's outlined, we can start to prosecute these projects. And, you know, they'll fall into their own natural timeframes.
So the money would come from the general fund or?
Well.
Any different places?
Many different places. I mean, you know, we talked about the, who knows whether we'll get it, but the the pool is a possibility for some of those federal dollars that came as a result of hurricane Ian. So, you know, maybe you, time will tell.
Does the school district give us any money for the use of the pool?
I don't think, no.
Someone used by the city.
The high school?
By the high school.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
They're just using it, they're not, for 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 free. Nobody knows?
Well, we do not receive any funding that I'm aware of, and nor do we, we also have similar agreements with the middle school for use of the tennis tennis court. So it's a community service we provide to the children.
Okay, you know, it's fine.
But I think your point is, the school board, they have a lot of money.
They they never have enough. For fifty years, they're, I'm under, I'm underpaid. I'm underpaid, I have summer off and every weekend and every holiday, but I'm underpaid. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking for money.
And the the pool building is one of, I mean, as you see here with the cost differential at one percent, that building is is in need of some some major repairs. And we are really band-aiding it along to keep it open and useful for the public, until which time a decision is made on on how to approach that facility and with the with the pools and and the plans for that.
In my opinion, we haven't done any maintenance in twenty years. Very little maintenance in twenty years, and now we got to try to catch up. I think we're looking at, we've been just building, building up our facilities, you know, and now and now we're getting old and so are they, so.
Well, I I think what's different here is we had not had an opportunity to have a consultant come and do a complete assessment. You know, through the years, as Nicole's made us aware, you know, there's those things that that we can clearly see, you can see that, oh, there might be a leak because there's a patch here. But until you have a consultant, an engineer, go in and examine these items and put them in a full report, any building in Florida, as we saw here with City Hall, is going to have reaction to elements in twenty years, twenty-five years. So I know that our team addresses them as they're visible and what they can do, and we we piecemeal it. But it's great now that we finally have a master plan, very similar to the direction we set forward with the bicycle pedestrian master plan, is that you have a document now that leads to your decision-making, you prioritize those based on criteria, such as, you know, safety, travel distance from school. So now we have a criteria to base those decisions on, and we have more knowledge of 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 how those facilities, their needs are. But prior to that, unless you have that expertise giving you that information, you know, we would be just picking each facility and and bringing.
I I really appreciate you getting a consultant to look at our maintenance program, I'm very happy with this. And they they pointed out that we need them, we need to know what we're doing, so, yes, no.
I was going to say, in fairness to both staff and even previous councils, not many, but some, the bottom line is, these weren't problems ten, fifteen years ago, everything's just gotten older, so now we're stuck with it. But it's not anybody's really to blame.
Oh, it's just, it's realities.
I would, I just add because I wouldn't normally add on something like this, but, you know, I've been a city attorney for a long time in a lot of different jurisdictions. And and the reality is, these, you're doing the right thing with the facilities planning, but you're always going to be behind the ball because councils change, communities change, people's desires for facilities change. And so even those communities that really try to keep up, but maybe they can keep up with their vehicle fleets and replace them before they start to fall. But but when you start getting to capital facilities, it's just super hard because, you know, schools will ask for improvements, other people, laws will change, things will always always be adapting, so.
And since we double in population in twenty years, yes, yeah, keeping up is keeping up. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Was it, city manager, where do we go from here?
I think we have enough direction. I don't know if you'd like to ask Councilmember Corey if he's got any comments as well before we finish.
Councilman's Corey? No, I agree with what's been said, especially by staff with respect to the having the engineering firm give us an assessment of all the facilities. I think it, what we need to do going forward is to appropriately plan the remediation of problems that it points out. And I'm all for the program to develop the green zone on that that map that's being shown. So I think we've given council, we've given staff appropriate direction here. And I'm looking forward to working with council and the staff to see it all being accomplished.
One second, anything else?
No, that concludes our presentation, we have, we have direction.
Okay. Now, are we going to go to staff on the twenty-fifth, is that already done? We're all done?
We're, no, we've completed, Laura Laura did that at the beginning of the presentation.
So discussion, we had that, we finished that, so. Public comment, how about public? Come on, we get some public here. I guess we're going to have to adjourn, we'll be back at five thirty. Thank you, folks.